Very good. Well, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on April 27, 2021. Again, via Zoom. Roll call, please.
That's Mayor Foster.
Present.
Gross. Winn.
Present.
Dobbs.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members except for Councilor Gross, who has a tennis game to coach this evening, are present, as is the mayor, city administrators, assistant city administrator, and several other, city clerk, and several other staff members. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Okay, moved by Goodrich, seconded by.
I'll second it, Mayor.
By Winn? All in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, the agenda is approved. We have one proclamation this evening I'd like to read. City of Corleville proclamation, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment, and whereas increasing bicycle access and safety enables residents of Corleville, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community, and whereas the metro area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps to support local businesses, and whereas throughout this month of May, residents of Corleville can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride, and whereas these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Bicycle Month, and May 17 through the 23rd, 2021, to be Bike to Work Week in Corleville, and encourage and urge all residents who are able to join in this observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no less than six feet of separation from passing a bicyclist, and taking to the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles per hour, and yulting the bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. Sign this 27th day of April, 2021, John A. Lundell, Mayor. And yes, we have Bob Boplinger, longtime bicycle advocate that has joined us for many years to accept this proclamation. Bob, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, yeah, I'm Bob Boplinger. I'm the education advocacy coordinator for bicyclists of Iowa City, and I've also had the good fortune for the last three years to be on the Board of Directors for the League of American Bicycles, and they're the national advocacy group. They started Bike Month in 1955. Iowa City, Iowa, our area has been celebrating it since 1990, and so we're at it again, and this year, like everything else, we're thinking bigger and better, so there are going to be events not only through the month of May, but all through the summer. Two things I'd bring your attention to. Number one, and I'm glad Sherry is on the screen tonight, on the 13th of May, where Corleville will be hosting a leisure ride, starting at 6 o'clock, and it's starting from the Brown Deer Golf Course parking area, and two of the longtime residents, Dick and Vicky Seifers, are going to be hosting it, and I'm told that Sherry might even show up for one of the rides. I can't speak to that specifically.
Oh, I'm planning on being at all of them.
All right, well, there you go. Second thing I'd like to bring attention to is that there are a host of events going on all through May and then into the rest of the summer, and there's a website that's just been opened up called Bike Iowa City, and I left the exact web name with Thor, but I'd encourage you to check it out, see what's going on. One of the other big events in May will be the reopening of the Bike Library down on South Gilbert Court. They just moved from their location on Dubuque Street, and so that'll be a big event, and then there are many other things going on. So thanks again for making us part of the community, and we'll look for you on a bike.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Thor, make sure you get a nice signed copy of the proclamation, so.
Super, super. Thank you.
You bet. And Bob mentioned Sherry Proud, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Sherry, would you like to say a few words about some of the bicycle events that are coming up?
I would. I'll just touch on the ones in May and then refer everyone to the activity guide that they can find at corleville.org/parksandrec. Starting this Sunday, May 2nd, we are going to be distributing bike bells for anyone who wants to stop and pick one up at the Corleville Rec Center while supplies last. I don't know if you can see how cute these are, probably not, but they're great bike bells. We partnered with the MPO of Johnson County, and they donated 250, and we purchased another 250, and we're really gonna work hard in the month of May for people to understand sharing trails, how to pass on the left, how to use your bell, just so important for people to be aware that there are many kinds of trail users out there. And then on Wednesday, May 5th, we encourage all families to make a plan to participate in Ride Your Bike to School Day. That's a national date. Unfortunately, with COVID rules this year, we would normally be by the bike racks and pass out those bike bells and be able to give away prizes like bike helmets and stuff. Unfortunately, this year, we can't do that with the school district, but we are distributing the same products to the schools, and they will figure out a way to get them into the hands of the kids there. Bob already talked about the May 13th Leisure Ride, and that would be happening the first, the second Thursday of each month, leaving from Brown Deer Golf Course parking lot. And then May 18th, I'm really excited about this one. We are going to do a ride like a girl night, three times this summer, out at, from 6:00 to 7:30, out at the Corleville Flow Trail, and it will be girls-only night, so all of our female council members can join me out there on that night if you'd like. And we've got a couple of people who off-road ride and can offer guidance and advice for everyone. That same night, we also have a Bike Maintenance 101 class, and we have another one of those in June, so I'd encourage everyone to be aware that bicycles are on the road right now, share the trails, and check out all of our activities that we have happening across the county at Bike Iowa City. I think that's dot com, or is it dot org, Bob?
Uh, com.
Dot com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Thank you both. There's lots to do for bicyclists around town. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll move on now to item number five, which is just comments. This would be the time on the agenda for anyone who's at City Hall or who has logged in through Zoom to address us on an item that's not already on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, or, you know, are there folks that would like to speak to us?
I've received no written comments, and there's no one at City Hall, and no one raising their hands.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will move on. The next item is an update from the Johnson County Veteran Affairs, Office of Veteran Affairs update. Gary, are you with us? Yes, there he is. Gary, and I apologize, Gary, if I mispronounced your last name. Bo- Bosin Neeler, I'm gonna try that one, and you should feel free to correct me. You're muted, Gary. There you go.
I was unmuted on audio only, and then everything was rejoined, so thank you, Mayor Lundell, for having me and City Council. It's Bozineiler, I did shorten it to Bo many years ago while in the Air Force for the convenience of all, but I'll just take a couple of quick moments to share what we do here. We're fortunate, I believe, that our veterans and our families, families of veterans in Iowa, for each of the 99 counties by Iowa Code to have a veteran service office, so my role is to connect veterans and quite a few family members to benefits they're eligible for. I could share a screen possibly, but I've got so much to cover, but essentially what we do is we meet with a veteran and the family member and talk to him or her about what they're interested in pursuing for healthcare at the VA hospital. As you know, we have VA hospital at a clinic right here in Corleville, Iowa City. There's only two VA hospitals in the state, so we have lots of veterans who have no other medical coverage, and they move here mainly for that reason, so. Got quite a few veterans who live, reside in Corleville and throughout the county that see me to get them into the VA hospital, or sign up for to use their education benefits at the University of Iowa or Kirkwood. Unfortunately, there are far too many veterans who were injured in the line of duty, so it's a big part of my work is filling out forms to connect them to what's called a service-connected disability, and that can range from anybody from a jet aircraft mechanic or someone who's on shooting a weapon a lot to file for a hearing loss claim to one I had earlier, actually took about a year of advocating, fighting with the VA to get this claim approved from the VA as a Vietnam veteran who has several of the cancers as a result of being exposed to Agent Orange, so. $3,000 a month now, free healthcare and property tax exemption, and a few other benefits. It's a benefit I wish I would not, I was not in a position to help people obtain, but that's what we do. And so I had another veteran who was recently discharged with post-medic stress disorder. He was a student at the university and is not doing so well, and that could be related to the mental wounds of war, so that's just one of the, one of the things we do here, but there are over 5,000 veterans in Johnson County, filling out those forms, not just myself, but there are two veteran service officers over at the VA hospital. We bring in over $20 million in revenue, federal revenue to the county. So, again, a number that I wish wasn't that high, but it is. We also provide some temporary financial assistance to veterans who are struggling in between work for a variety of reasons. Currently, they've got to be earning under the 100% poverty income guideline, so for a single person, it's $1,063 a month. They've got to be honorably discharged, served on active duty. We vet the process pretty thoroughly, try to get the veteran employed, resolve landlord disputes, but we can provide a couple of months, up to three months, and a 12-month period of emergency assistance with rent, utilities, or grocery vouchers, and even burial. We do quite a few burials, but oftentimes when a family contacts me to help pay for a veteran, I can get some federal dollars to pay for that, and even bury him or her out in the veteran cemetery near Des Moines at Bad Meter. And, yeah, so I just want to take a few moments. I appreciate the opportunity. I don't know why I haven't come on before. I do talk to the Board of Supervisors once a year about a report, so. Are there any questions about anything that we do, or?
Gary, how, where's your office, and how's the best way for folks to reach out to the, you do some fantastic work, I'm very impressed.
Thank you, and I was gonna close with that. I do have, the office number is 319-356-6049, and I recently changed the email to make it, well, we had to update to a dot org for a couple of reasons, but I, instead of using part of my name, which then veterans would think that six of my last letter's name was my name, but we went to va@johnsoncountyiowa.gov. So, we get, you know, we get calls all the time. I am down here at the Health and Human Services Building.
Okay.
Our DHS, and been here throughout the pandemic, primarily by appointment, but we do allow walk-ins if I'm available, not with another veteran, so I had five veterans today in one walk-in, and I would like to announce, I know that Corleville's got a Veterans Memorial going, I just want to announce that on Memorial Day at Swisher American Legion, there's an event at 9 o'clock. In Oxford, there's a parade at 10. Corleville's having an event at 11. I'm having one down here at the Johnson County Army Veterans Memorial at 13:30. So, lots of opportunities to get out and support your veterans, and unfortunately, the Memorial Day is for those who truly did give the ultimate sacrifices, those are veterans, which is for all veterans who serve, so.
Well, truly, thank you for your service, Gary. That's amazing. Any, does anyone have any other questions or comments for Gary while he's with us?
The only person I knew, Sherry, logged off, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night, and thank you for your service as well to the Corleville.
You bet, we appreciate that. You're welcome to stay on if you'd like, so.
I'm going on 12 hours, I'm gonna call it a night.
Okay, I don't blame you. Yeah, you too. Okay, very good, very interesting. Okay, we have one more presentation this evening, and this is from the Astig Planning Consulting Agency, V Fixmore Arazi. Again, I probably messed up that last name, but no, it is V forever, and we've been working with this group for well over a year, maybe a couple of years now, and they've done a great job of capturing partners in this process, not only City of Corleville, but the Flood Center, the Food Pantry, Soil and Water Conservation, just a whole number of groups of partners to make this a really terrific project, and it, V is with us this evening to sort of review where they're at, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council and staff. Just gonna take a second here to share my screen, so we can get started, it always takes a minute here, so, you know, it's only been a year and some change on COVID, it always takes a second, so bear with me. Hopefully you can see that, I'm just gonna, and present mode here. Okay, well, thank you again for having us here today. My name is V Fixmore Ariz, and I'm gonna be introducing folks here in just a second, but we're gonna be presenting on this Flood Resilience Action Plan that we've been working on for a little bit over a year now, and just to give you a sense of where we're headed, we're just gonna do some introductions, talk about what we've done, the frameworks we've used, and some of the recommendations, so you can see quite a bit to cover. I know you all have other items on the agenda here, so we'll be as thorough and efficient as possible. Before I get into team introductions, just really quick, wanted to say thank you so much to our project partners, the City of Corleville staff, Clear Creek Watershed Coalition, the neighbors, businesses, and nonprofits of Corleville. We just had tremendous support throughout this entire process, so my team here, so I am V Fixmore Ariz, I'm a certified planner, and the owner and CEO of Astig Planning, and I have David De La Torre, who's my community organizing planner, and Christina, you know De La Torre, who's our community resilience planner. We were very fortunate to be able to partner with John Bowler over at the Corleville Food Pantry, and Judy Joyce with Impact 7, also, also with Take a Kid Outdoors, the executive director, and of course, we've been working really closely with Craig Just with the Flood, he's the Flood Resilience Program Lead over at the University of Iowa, and Kate Giannini, who's the communication specialist with their team as well, and so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Craig. Hopefully he is here and able to unmute himself. I'm not sure, I can't actually see everybody here. I'm gonna actually stop my screen and see if I can find Craig. Yeah, I don't see him on here.
There, he just popped up.
Okay, great. Making me, making me sweat over here, Craig. I'll give him a second here to come on, there he is.
There he is.
Hey, I am actually personally inspecting the Corleville reservoir right now, as we speak, and I can assure you that the reservoir is providing good flood resilience to the City of Corleville currently, and, yeah, it's just too nice, we had to get the boat out today, so I am gonna stop my video, though. Well, I guess I don't necessarily have to. Can you share your slides again? Yeah, hopefully the bandwidth will hold up. It's a pleasure to be here, and thanks for the opportunity to address the council here. We're talking about resilience here in general, and flood resilience more specifically, and I think, you know, Iowans know what resilience is. If you're a landowner or a farmer, and you get sick, the combines show up to get those crops out of the field, and then, next slide, V, or whoever's running the slides, I'll go through quickly. We also know when we lack resilience, and so here's the 90-year-old widow kind of wondering, you know, what the world is gonna bring her in the coming days, and so, you know, this whole concept of resilience is an interesting topic, and he's in, you know, the City of Corleville needs to as well. Next slide, please. Oh, am I still here? There we go. So, we got some funding from the National Disaster Resilience Competition. In a nutshell, $97 million came to the state of Iowa via the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and the Flood Center, as was mentioned by Mayor Lundell, was a big part in getting this new award here, and roughly $40 million is being spent in the rural landscape, roughly $40 million being spent in the urban landscape to build flood resilience, but since the funding comes from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, over 50% of the funds need to be expended to the, for the benefit of low to moderate income populations, and so as we were developing the flood resilience kind of mentality and the program, we wanted to fiercely focus on folks who were often left behind, or most socially vulnerable folks, really at the intersection of flood risk and social vulnerability, right? Trying to bring in those two things together, and that really set kind of the framework or the mentality that we gave to Astig to then pursue the Flood Resilience Action Plan in Corleville that they're gonna show you today. Next slide, please. Still here? There it is. Hey, so the Iowa Watershed Approach Resilience Program did a lot of things, but I want to focus on those bottom two bullets, town-scale flood resilience action plans, and also coordinated care communities to some degree, but really for today, I suppose, even that second to last bullet with the town scale or neighborhood scale, flood resilience action plans. We did several of those in several communities, including Vinton, a small community outside of Cora, Iowa. We've done them really across the state, and again, with a fierce focus on these low to moderate income populations, so next slide, please. So, one of the things that I want to set you up for is that, you know, diverse stakeholders require diverse engagements, and so one of the things that I feel that the plan that Astig has prepared for you has made, one of the value propositions in that is through the new federal, it's called BRIC, B-R-I-C, which is building resilience, building resilient infrastructure and communities, and it's that community focus that I think the federal government is interested in as we build resilience, and it's what I think Corleville should be interested in, and so that's why, again, we charged Astig with kind of this fierce focus on these, the most socially vulnerable, and it might make the plan look a little different than what you've seen in the past with city planning, and I think we need to embrace that, because I think it sets the City of Corleville up to be, you know, pioneers on how to move forward on building resilience for the entire community, including these stakeholder groups that are often left behind, so I'll pass it back to you, V. That worked.
Thanks, yeah, no, that was great. Thanks so much, Craig. So, yeah, I'm gonna take over from here, and it's gonna be a little strange here, because we're like managing and talking at the same time. Okay, so this plan that Craig has been talking about, this Flood Resilience Action Plan, the overall goal is really to, as you can see, assist local residents and key stakeholders in that meaningful actionable flood resilience plan, and, you know, engaging in flood resilience and civic participation, so there's sort of like four buckets that that falls into, which is developing that better understanding of current social vulnerability, and then identifying strategies, opportunities, and partnerships to reduce that vulnerability and increase resiliency, and then engaging the community in implementations of those strategies, opportunities, and partnerships, and finally, increasing the broader learning in and from the community so that we have final outcomes that are really from the community base. And, you know, of course, Corleville is really leading in flood protection, and, you know, the legacy that Corleville has, building and leading community resilience, was, you know, the Clear Creek, Iowa River, Biscuit Creek, a lot of that flooding was addressed through the flood protection innovations. You can see the stormwater pumps, the raising, and all of, you know, all of these incredible infrastructure improvements have really taken a lot of the, you know, those larger flood events, the risk there has been alleviated to a large degree, so our, our project focus, our scope here was really at the intersection of, you know, where are their vulnerable populations, as Craig mentioned, the social, the social vulnerability, which some of that data was looked at through the census, so when we were able to identify what the vulnerabilities were in these areas, renters, people with disabilities, and single mothers were identified as particularly present in these communities that were experiencing, you know, severe stormwater inundation issues, so that's kind of the project scope that we were working within, using data, census data, and then also some of the stormwater flooding data, and when we put those together, this area was identified, which is kind of a large area, but if it's, if you look at it, it's really west of Iowa River, south of Highway 80, east of the Corleville Mall, and then north of Second Street, so kind of a large swath. We did get a few more neighborhoods kind of pockets a little bit, you know, north of 80 that kind of came in as we started doing our community engagement, but for the most part, a lot of our focus was on this area here, and our approach for flood resilience is really to engage community members and acknowledging that community resilience is led by the community, so the objective is to facilitate leadership and capacity building of the community such that the collective, that collectively we can achieve reduced future flood losses, enhance that local economy, and promote social equity, and so our role was really to provide the horizontal support as the traditional planning experts to further enhance that community capacity in meeting those goals, those, so it was really a community-led approach. And our timeframe, as I had mentioned, was a little bit over a year, so we started it back in December of 2019, and then, as you can see, our community outreach and engagement was really set for March, April of 2020, and as you can imagine, COVID really changed pretty much everything that we were planning on doing. We were still able to host, you know, our workshops, and we were able to get some community interviews, we did business pledge campaign, a lot of these we'll talk about in more detail moving forward, but just wanted to show you that even though COVID upended many, many things, we were still able to do some of these, these outreach and engagements, so the workshops, the phone calling, surveying and things, so, and then here we are in April 2021, having finished the plan, worked with city staff, and you have that final draft in your possession here, so we're gonna go over most of the process and then answer any questions that you have, and the recommendations that came from that, and then answer any questions that you may have about the plan itself. So, David, we'll discuss about the community outreach, and I'm not sure, David, if you are able to unmute yourself here. Okay, let's see if, if I can allow you to unmute yourself. Are you there?
Yeah, thank you so much, V. I will talk a little bit more about the community outreach. So, we work towards an equity framework and using organizing approaches, doing things such as door knocking, sorry, we conceptualize, you know, the original plan to do door knocking, in-person workshops, in-person interviews, and table and booth approaches, however, we had to pivot to COVID-19 responsible and safe approaches as we, you know, initially began some of the outreach, so. So examples of that is, you know, some of the social media collaborations that we relied on, video campaigns, emails, postcards, online workshops, phone calls, interviews and surveys. So we'll talk more about that in the following slides. But just to give kind of an example, I mean, that's some photos of on the left. You can see that it's, you know, us recapping after a workshop, you know, the Stig team. We have a photo, you know, an interview with emergency management as well as some of the outreach that we did with the Corvo Community Food Pantry. And next slide, please. In terms of the summer workshops, we held two of them. So the first workshop was the purpose of it was to share stories of resilience, some of the stories that, you know, we had come across and people I shared with us through the engagement process. And we had residents listen and, you know, collectively define what resilience meant and create a resilience framework. And the second workshop, we also we invited, you know, the residents who came to the first one and continue to do outreach to invite other residents to attend. And we created a community resilience map. So we invited residents to provide examples of, you know, what are some opportunities in the community? What are some resources for flooding? What are some flood events, you know, in the past or in the present that you've experienced? And we've mapped some of that out in in our community resilience map. As I mentioned, the first workshop was the one where we created the resilience framework. And the the definition that residents came together to collectively develop was resilience is being proactive and developing networks of support, whether it's neighbors, local groups, local government, so we can ask for help when we have hit our limits and be willing to help each other. And I think a really clear example that also is, you know, the photo that you see there, which is, you know, a photo of people coming together after the natural storm last year and and talking and, you know, helping each other out. So definitely the resilience framework, which influenced some of the work that we did moving forward. We also had the website, which we use for outreach and engagement. So the website has tabs for storytelling. It has the resilience pledge campaign. It has resources for, you know, some of the state local resources for flooding as well as, you know, our contact information and any updates such as the plan itself, which which the website hosts. So an example of one of the resources that we include on the website was one of the stories of the the city of Corvo's resilience after the 2008 flood, as told by our very own Mayor Lindell, who shared this story in one of the workshops. So you can definitely, I don't know if we can share the example of the clip.
I'm gonna I'm gonna try, but I didn't get a prompt to share my audio. So tell me, I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear it, but you let me know. Yeah.
It's a real pleasure to be asked to do this. Water, water issues, whether they be water quality or water quantity, have been a passion of mine for many, many decades, actually.
Yeah, so this is just a short clip of longer sort of a story, which is about 13 minutes long. You can find on the website. And the website is www.floodresilientcorreville.com. So it's flood resilient with a T, correville.com. The other thing, another outreach approach was our initiative was the Corvo Resilience Pledge, which encouraged businesses to support the community. It wasn't conceptualized by one of our partners, Judy Joyce of Impact 7G. And the idea was really to recruit local businesses to be aware of, you know, flooding issues and pledge to support with supplies in in future times of crisis. So it's really just to, you know, get the conversation started, come together. You know, we had a list of FEMA approved, you know, resources. We had the list and as we interviewed people in the community, you know, we heard their stories. We may have also added to the list as well, things such as like, you know, pet supplies, which was mentioned in people's stories of previous floods. You know, we included that on the list as well. And, you know, we really had, you know, a video pledge campaign also collaboratively developed with some of the local businesses in the community. So definitely, it was it was definitely collaborative approach to outreach. And we included, you know, we were able to acquire, I believe, Spanish translation services, bottled water and pet food as well by some of the local businesses who who donated or pledged to support in future times. So that's the pledge campaign. And with that, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague Christina, who will talk more about the survey, the surveys.
Thank you, David. All right, so this slide right here. So we partnered with the Corvo Food Pantry to do some service survey of the community members, particularly people who use their services. And we're looking for renters, low income households and populations of, I think, minorities. So we received a lot of response. And from that, if you click on the next slide, you see that 42% of the 66 people surveyed indicated that they experienced some type of flooding. And out of those who did, 21 and so percent indicated it was a river, riverine type of flooding. And the other 25% in greater proportion was talking about groundwater and stormwater flooding. So that was the key finding among very low income and minority renter populations. That was really important to to identify, especially because other other information like census data is really hard to track that information at that level. In the next slide, we also did a survey of the nonprofit service providers that serve the Correville area. And so that included 37 service providers in the area. And one of the main questions we asked was, what are the top five services that they commonly provide, which can also be used in times of emergencies? And so some of those included food, mental and health counseling, housing and community resources. And the ones that were least common or translation services, legal services, transportation and childcare. So these are the services that would be in more need in the Correville area. And a second question we asked was their top five collaborations in case of an emergency. And that's the the map that you see right now, the network is a result of that that question. And one of the main things we find is you see a robust network of collaborators. And central to this network is the Corvo Community Food Pantry, the Horizon's Family Service Alliance and the United Way of Johnson and Washington Counties. You can see that a lot of the existing collaborations are connected through these three organizations. Something that's also very interesting is that among services that were least common, such as translation and legal services, these services were provided by organizations that were not as connected. So this includes I W C Compassion and and I'm forgetting, and successful living, which are providing key services and are key organizations that should be helped to be more embedded in a network to the collaborations. The next slide just kind of talks about the gives examples of the importance of collaborations across organizations. You know that COVID hit many organizations' operations. And so here in green, we have an example that was shared in the survey where Habitat for Humanity indicated that because of COVID, they had to stop doing reconstruction projects, but instead leverage their existing shelter house relationship to provide support to their efforts and rehousing individuals. And so that's one way that organizations are able to leverage their existing relationships, resources and experiences to better meet immediate needs of community members in Correville. The next slide. Provide some of the recommendations that my that he's going to introduce.
Okay, so I was actually gonna just touch on some of these recommendations that we found throughout the the process. Some of the things, main, main things that kind of came out and stood out to us was really the opportunity to launch a survey focusing on renters and identifying the specific housing and flooding needs for renters. There, you know, there's a lot of renters in the area and trying to understand better their needs would be helpful in terms of moving forward with future planning opportunities for flood resilience. And some of that is due to COVID really hampering some of our own ability. We certainly did the best that we could and we were seeking more of the, you know, most vulnerable folks, people that had, you know, food insecurity, travel, you know, automobile insecurity, things like that. And so, but having a survey that would focus on renters moving forward would be, I think, very informative. And then supporting those rehousing efforts during and after flood or severe weather events. Again, paying attention to the to the renter needs. We found through a lot of our interviews and in our in our workshops that those were things that people really felt were were lacking. One of the other aspects was the addressing the stormwater flooding issues experienced by low to moderate income residents. And I know that city staff is working on, you know, being able to map those areas and, you know, work with the infrastructure and also working with the Clear Creek Watershed Coalition on being able to implement some out of the box strategies, you know, in terms of how do you address, you know, the flash flooding in certain areas? If it's close to a creek, maybe there's opportunity to open up that creek. So I know we've been working with staff and just encourage and, you know, continuing down that path. So number four is really providing those flood buyouts for frequent stormwater, storm flooded residential homes, especially for those who volunteered to do so. And this is something that we heard very strongly was that there are there are houses and residential areas in particular. And and I know that the city is already on that path as well. And so we do have some of that information in terms of the who those individuals would be and also recognize that it is a sensitive issue. So we haven't necessarily mapped that. But we would certainly work with city staff on being able to identify where those locations are. We didn't do to the sensitivity of mapping something like that and then potentially disincentivizing any future interest. We we would just rather work closer with city staff, but just wanted to also say, you know, great job, like doing the 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 buyouts and just continuing down that path as well. So we can just add some more information there. So strengthening those existing nonprofit networks, just as Christina had talked about, incentivizing those cross collaboration services. So, you know, translation services, transportation services, just connecting those a little bit clearer to the networks that are really strong. I I feel like during COVID, you know, there was so much going on and a lot of services that were having to shift online or distance and things like that. So it really highlighted, I think, if you ever could have had a survey that really captured a moment of like, what are the services that are really being used and and missing? I think that we were really able to capture that. And it would be, I think, very helpful to the Correville community at large and Johnson County really at large to to take a look at that a little bit further and see where there's opportunities to plug those organizations in a little bit better. So certainly offer that as well. And then investing in education to increase that public understanding of flooding, flood protections and resources. So we did create some translated documents that identified, you know, what is stormwater flooding? What, you know, what is riverine flooding? What are the differences there so that people have the language and can identify and be able to communicate exactly the the stormwater flooding issues that they're having? So they can be specifically addressed. And then one of our outcomes from this plan was actually a translated document. You can see kind of on the right here that are the the recommendations that we're providing here to you tonight. So we've translated that into Spanish and we'll be distributing those to the Corvo Food Pantry and the library and some other opportunities to get that out to the public so that folks know they didn't, you know, just provide information to the plan, but that there was recommendations that came out of their efforts as well. And then also wanted to just highlight some of the funding recommendations. The National League of Cities Leadership and Community Resilience Grant Program that was last December, that could have been applied. And I imagine they'll be doing it again. But really, an opportunity to find further dollars to do more planning or community engagement. So that's from the National League of Cities. And I believe Corvo will be very competitive for that based on some of the information that we've got, we've we've started. And then, as Craig had mentioned, the the brick, the FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, we've had communications with Craig and his team about, you know, what does that look like? Well, how would that work? And I know that their team has submitted, I believe, the first brick grant that the state has put together. So always opportunities to further collaborate with the university, with the Flood Center to potentially also bring in some of the more federal dollars to, you know, really enhance and create more resilience within the communities. So, oh, yeah, I will turn this over back to Christina to talk about some publications.
Thank you, V. So we also have two upcoming publications. The first one is with the IHR Publication House, where we talk about the planning process for building community resilience and what that looks like. And we showcased the Corvo Fab as well as and a publication through the American Planning Association, which will be showcasing additional IWA case studies from the flood resistance action.
And I think with that, that is all we have to present tonight. But we do welcome questions, comments, thoughts, things we can follow up on.
I do have a quick question. So I read through the your not presentation, but your final draft that you sent to us. And on the website, it said that once the planning process has complete, either the city of Corvo or local nonprofit partner will be responsible for maintaining an update the information on the website, have a stick, you know, make a recommendation to either the city or nonprofits to take that on. And when is the planning process complete? Has it been complete?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, I believe, will be done, we are pretty much done with the planning process. And, you know, we've got this final draft and we've put together a short document for community review on the recommendations. So, yeah, we would recommend, I I think it would be helpful if the city did take that over or take elements of it because it is a resource for the community in terms of, you know, stormwater, where they can go. And and we found a lot of times people just don't know where to go to get information. So it would be helpful, I think, if the city would take that over. But of course, we, you know, that if that's if that's helpful, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't have a question. I did want to just make a couple of comments. The the first thing I wanted to say is thank you. Thank, because this what this is an amazing project. And I'm so grateful that, you know, the the, I love that term fierce focus, that the fierce focus was placed on the most vulnerable citizens, especially since we we are becoming very well aware of how these massive climate events have a disproportionate impact on vulnerable populations. So just really grateful for for your work, for for presenting this information. I also think the the way in which you went about this process was very exciting. And I hope it can be a model for planning future projects in the city. The online workshop that you hosted is one of the probably the best, I would not want to, I would say probably the best one that I've attended in COVID times. So Bravo on how you adjusted your your plan according to what was happening with the pandemic. So just thank you, great work. And we're so, we're so lucky to have have all of this fantastic information.
So much, Megan, and thanks for attending the workshop, too. That was really helpful to have you there and and for really for residents to see that city council are paying, are listening. And I think oftentimes residents, especially people that don't have access to so many things, that they're like, wow, you know, they're they're listening. This isn't just going into some black box. And so I really appreciate your leadership in that. So thank you.
Hey, well, thank you, V, and your colleagues. Yeah, I've really enjoyed being a part of the process throughout this and it's impressive what you've accomplished. And even more so because of the way you had to change, change your whole structure and plan once the pandemic hit. So you, you were very responsive and I really congratulate you on that. So I look forward to working with you folks again. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lindell. You were also very key in, in this process as well and part of our workshop and on the website. So thank you for your, for your leadership as well and everybody who was a part of this. It's, thank you for all your support and we hope that it continues and we're here to provide any further information or assistance moving forward.
Great. Very good. Look forward to working with you. And have a good evening. Okay, great. Well, let's, we have some work to, to do now. And we'll move on to item number eight, and that's the fiscal year 2022 Iowa Department of Transportation Consolidated Transit Funding Grant Application. There's the public hearing first and then a resolution authorizing filing of the application. And as is always the case in, in this process is we always are very aggressive in applying, submitting an application to the DOT for a substantial amount of money. Realistically knowing it's highly unlikely we'll get everything we asked for, but we've learned that if you don't ask for it, you won't get it. So this application is for about $1.87 million, if I'm reading that correctly. A formula funds for the state transit, which includes about 304,000 of formula funds for state transit assistance and $582,000 from the statewide federal operating assistance and, and transfer the transit system. So that's the federal operating assistance. And then another 32, almost 33,000 for service to the elderly and persons with disabilities. So it's a very comprehensive both operating and capital grant application. So with that introduction, I'll, I will open the public hearing on the City of Corvino's 2022 Iowa DOT Consolidated Transit Funding Application. Mr. Clerk, any written or oral comments?
There were no written comments. No one is in the audience and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay.
If Rob Rock is here though.
Okay, great. Well, we'll close the public hearing then and consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2022 Iowa DOT State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration Funding. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Gwen, I believe. Discussion. Any questions for Vicki or Vicki, is there, is anything you'd like to particularly mention or highlight?
Um, I think you pretty well covered it, Mayor. Like you mentioned, this is our annual consolidated application that we have to submit. And so you are correct. There will obviously be funding for all of this, but we, we hope to at least get some of the items funded.
Thank you. Okay, roll call please.
Win.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
The resolution is approved all eyes with gross absent. Item nine is Lot Two Heartland Plaza Part Five. This is the first reading of an ordinance that will, for property located within, within Corvino, generally known as Heartland Plaza Part Five, from C2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD Two Commercial Planned Unit Development Two District. If I recall, this was the former, what was the name of the breakfast? Matt Perkins.
Village Inn.
Village Inn, thank you. The former Village Inn property that's being rezoned for, for a new restaurant that would like to go in there. So Dave Johnson was the Director of Community Development is with us and he can explain it a lot better than I just did. Dave?
Sure. This is actually going to pave the way for a Raising Cane's restaurant. We've been working very closely with the design team on this and they've done a really nice job to make a fast food restaurant, conform with our West Land use area design guidelines. I'm just going to switch over and share my screen really quick. Oh, I can't share my screen really quick. I don't know. John, if you can put up a, enable me or put up a copy of the elevations. If not, that's okay. I can explain and, and the city council has been given a copy of all of this ahead of time. So you'll notice the, the building is predominantly brick, metal trim and glass. This is, this will replace the former Village Inn restaurant, the address is commonly.
He made you, he made you co-host so you could share.
Wonderful. Can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect. So as you can see from these building, building elevations, after working with the design team, we've arrived at a, a concept that is predominantly almost all brick or masonry. There's two types of masonry shown here at the bottom left. Mostly metal trim and glass as well as architectural features to add some interest to this project. This will replace the Village Inn restaurant. That'll be a demolition. We're treating this project as new development in the West Land Use Area. The property is currently zoned C2. As city council is aware, any new development in the West Land Use Area is required to be done under a planned unit development. Hence the request for to rezone to a PUD as well as the PUDB site plan. The site is 1.19 acres and we have, staff has reviewed the zoning requests and finds that the development conforms with the land use plan map designation of regional commercial. And restaurants are allowed uses in this designation and the site and building development also conform with the West Land Use Area Master Plan Design Guidelines. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their April 7th, 2021 meeting. By a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended approval of the rezoning and the PUDB site plan for Lot Two Heartland Plaza Part Five. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Item C is a public hearing on this proposed rezoning. I'll now open that public hearing and Mr. Clerk, any, any comments, either written or oral?
Were no written comments. There's no one in the audience to speak. I'm not sure if there's anyone raising their hands right now or not.
I did not recognize anybody in the attendee list.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and entertain the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 1009, an ordinance amending the Corvino zoning ordinance. The same being ordinance number 2020 dash 1009, as previously amended. Rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corvino, Johnson County, Iowa. And generally known as Lot Two Heartland Plaza Part Five from C2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD Two Commercial Plan Unit Development Two District. Introduced for adoption first consideration by Councilmember Win, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Ordinance passes its first reading all eyes with gross absent. Item 10 is the third and final consideration of an ordinance governing the, the sale of consumer fireworks and limiting it to I2 and I3 districts in the city. Don, the ordinance please.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 1007, an ordinance amending Chapter 165 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Corvino regarding the sale of consumer fireworks introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion?
This has a good question, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, will there be a fine for, for people who set off fireworks in city property?
There's, this is just for the sale of, there is already a, it's already not legal to send them off under a previous ordinance. So there, there were fines issued last year for people who sent them off in the city, in the city illegally.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have, I have people asking me questions. So I just wanted to ask that question so that everybody can hear. Thank you.
And can we get just a reminder of what that fine is?
Uh, I believe it is, it's a, I believe it's a hundred dollars plus court costs. So it'd be a hundred and let's see, they changed the court cost, 170 bucks.
And can you, so the best course of action, if we do hear, you know, citizens setting off fireworks, the best course of action would be to, to just notify the, the police department, if you can kind of get a general sense of where they're being.
Yes.
Just shot off from.
They would, they would be, that would be who would enforce this. The problem you have is if they don't see it, they can't, they'd have to have somebody come and testify at court. So if somebody calls it in and wants, that's one of the things we'd have to look at, if they don't see it personally, they're not going to issue a citation unless somebody was willing to go to court to testify.
Thanks.
Roll call please.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
The fireworks ordinance passes its final consideration, all eyes with gross absent. Item 11 is community cat ordinance. This is the first consideration of a ordinance that we discussed at the last work session we had that will help the city participate and allow our program to trap, spay, neuter and release feral cats within the city. Let's introduce the ordinance first and then perhaps Kevin can review the highlights of it.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 1008, an ordinance amending Chapter 55 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Corvino regarding community cats is introduced for first consideration adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Dodds. Kevin, would you like to just give a review, please?
Sure. As we talked about the last work session, what these cats, a, a community cat is basically a feral cat without an owner. And what would happen is normally, just like we normally would, if the animal control officer or anybody in the police department gets the, finds a cat, they bring it down to the animal shelter. And part of this program is that the, the Humane Society, Johnson County Humane Society and other volunteers run this program. So they're notified if it's a feral cat and they, they will need to tell the animal shelter whether or not they want this cat to participate in the program. If they do, what happens is they, the cats are spayed and spayed or neutered and also given vaccinations and their ears are clipped. And what happens is the Humane Society would bring that animal back to a location on somebody's private property that allows these animals to, to be housed. So as we discussed last, I mean, it wouldn't be anything, you have to have permission from the landowner. And that's not something the city is recommending that they allow city property to be, to do, but so that, that would be how the program works. So the, the feral cats have no owners and they would have their ears clipped. They'd be spayed and neutered, spayed or neutered, not and, and be vaccinated before they'd be put back out and the, out onto the property in Corvino. And if the animal control officer or police department finds an animal with an ear clipped, they will not pick that animal up and bring it to the animal shelter like they normally would. Unless the animal is causing a nuisance and the person, it's on somebody's property who doesn't want it there. So that's what we, that's how the program works. It's not anything the city, and this is the same with the other cities, the Johnson County Humane Society is the one who has volunteers to pay for the spaying and neutering vaccinations and feeds, sets up feeding places on people's private property for these animals to feed in, in the city. So the, the one thing it does change is right now the, the ordinance does not allow cats or dogs to be outside without a leash on. So this ordinance also changes that law to allow community cats as an exemption to that law.
So Kevin, just to clarify, if a property owner have their cat on their property and they want them to be, you know, to, to be part of this program, will they have to contact the Johnson County Humane Society themselves? Or can they just contact the animal control from Corvino and then have animal control trap that cat and then bring it to the shelter?
So what animal control usually does in this situation, because obviously feral cats don't like people to approach them, the animal control officer usually bring a live trap to the property owners and they'll be able to put it out. And then once the animal is trapped, then the animal control officer would bring that down to the animal shelter and start the process that we described. So that would be how that would work. If they, if they want.
So they will contact the animal control instead of the Johnson County Humane Society?
Yeah. So what happens is the shelter will contact the Humane Society to determine whether they want that animal to participate.
Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Councilmember Foster.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
The community cat ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes with gross absent. Thank you, Kevin, for your work and another example of how we're responsive to, to requests of the city. Item 12 is Deer Creek Road Repair 2021. This is a project that we construct Deer Creek Road between the Iowa Interstate Railroad and 340th Street. Bid report, please. City engineer Scott Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an easy one. We only received one bid and that bid was from LL Pelling Company. Their base bid amount was 178,438.70 and they submitted a bid alternate amount of 5,996.40. The base bid was slightly over our engineer's estimate, but the bid alternate was actually a little bit under our estimate. Overall, we felt like this was a very reasonable cost for a somewhat difficult project. Given that the, the time constraints are they have to do this work during overnight hours. So based on the, our review of the bid, we certainly recommend awarding the contract to LL Pelling Company, including the bid alternate.
Thank you, Scott. Any, any questions for Scott? Okay, let's have the consideration of the ordinance accepting the bids.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the Deer Creek Road Repair 2021. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call?
Win.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item C is a resolution approving the contract and bond documents for this project.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Deer Creek Road Repair 2021 Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Win, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call?
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item 13 is Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain. This is for full depth concrete patching and subdrain work on Muddy Creek Lane near Wickham Circle. This is setting a public hearing on the plans and specifications. This public hearing will be held during our next city council meeting, which is on May 11th. Resolution, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of cost and form of contract for the Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain 2021 Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Scott, is anything that you wanted to brief the council about this project?
No, this is similar to repairs we've done in a number of neighborhoods over the years where the first sign of trouble is we, we where, um, the first sign of trouble is we, we see, um, silt washing up from underneath the pavement, coming up through the joints and usually collecting at the nearest low point, uh, downhill. And that's usually followed by holes along the back, back of curb and, uh, potentially settling occurring under driveways and sidewalks. So this section of Muddy Creek Lane, uh, was identified as such an area, uh, a few years ago. And so, Street Superintendent Eric Fisher has put together a, a project, um, to, go back in and, and add subdrain tile along the back of curb and also to install what we call, uh, cutoff walls across the street, which is meant to intercept that, uh, water that's moving under the pavement and causing erosion under the pavement and, uh, intercept that water and get it into the storm sewer system before it can do, uh, more damage. So, um, it's been successful in the past and we expect the same out of this project.
Thank you, Scott. Any comments from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item fourteen is the engineering services agreement for a concept grading plan for the future redevelopment of the city's parcels along both sides of Fourth Avenue Place. Done?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with B O R for Fourth Avenue Place Concept Grading Plan. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, second by Foster. Any comments or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item B is, uh, uh, another resolution approving an engineering services with the same firm that will revise the Central Park Concept Plan and design stormwater improvements. So it will be partially funded by an existing Iowa watershed approach grant that the city received for the Biscuit Creek Restoration Work upstream of Central Park. Done?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with B O R for Central Park Stormwater Improvements. Introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Ooh, that was close. Uh, I think it's by Dodd's. Roll call.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item fifteen is the Water Well Number Ten Recasing Project. This is a resolution for services that are needed to rehabilitate Water Well Number Ten, which will involve installing a new casing pipe. Done?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Veenstra and Kim Inc. for Water Well Number Ten Recasing Project. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. I know in our notes to note, Kelly included information that this is a, a critical project in terms of the, of the well that's affected and the significance of the work. Um, Scott, is there anything you wanted to tell us about this?
I'll hand that off to, uh, Water Superintendent Matt Gilmore.
Oh, like Matt, I didn't see you there. Sorry, I didn't mean to, to, sorry.
No, that, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, um, as Kelly did note, this is a, uh, critical well for us. This is a Jordan well, it's our second highest producing well. Um, so especially in, um, times of, uh, drier, uh, periods, this is, uh, a well that is often used and, um, absolutely necessar- necessary to ensure our production. This project is, is, um, time sensitive as well. It needs to be done as, as quickly as possible. Um, so that in case we do, um, end up in a, in a drought type situation later this summer, that this project can, can be completed by then so that we can put it back online and ensure that we have, um, adequate production.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt, will this affect services of any kind to the citizens of Corleville?
No, it should not. This, this well will be taken offline while the, uh, construction process is, is ongoing. It'll be isolated. It should not affect services. Um, it, it will be totally isolated and we should be able to maintain production.
Good question, Jill. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd's.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Res- resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item B is, uh, for the same project, uh, setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of costs for this work. This will be a public hearing that will be held again at our next council meeting on May eleventh.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of cost and form of contract for the Water Well Number Ten Recasing Project. Introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Quinn. Any questions? Roll call, please.
I was just curious, and when he says it's time sensitive, if we're having the public hearing, is there something that we need to do in the meantime, you know, because that will be two weeks away and, Matt, can you address that for me?
Sure, absolutely. Um, this well is currently in production. The, the sensitive issue of this is that the, I'm going to try to explain this as best as I can. There's, there's two critical components to a well. Um, one is the structural component and that structural component is basically the hole that we put in the ground to get the water out, out of. The casing is part of that component. If that casing deteriorates significantly, significantly, it can begin to affect the structural integrity of the well, which can cause much larger issues. So this project is essentially, um, inserting a new, smaller diameter casing into the existing well and then putting new grout around it to ensure that the structure of the well remains intact. Um, there hasn't been any indication from Northway, the company that did the inspection on the well, that it should be taken out of service or, or anything like that. So I don't think there's anything in the next few weeks that we could do to, to help our cause.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from Matt? Roll call.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. Item sixteen is two items, uh, related to the Iowa River Landing. The first one is to approve a two-year lease for temporary office space for the E C H L French Hockey Franchise playing at the Extreme Arena. For, for the space at eight oh two Quarry Road.
Resolution approving that certain lease agreement with Deacon Sports and Entertainment, U S L L C. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Foster. Kelly, is there anything you wanted to, to tell the council about this project?
Um, no, this was part of our agreement with the hockey team when they originally agreed to come here is that we would provide that space for two years. So, um, this, uh, they will be doing some improvement work to the building, um, and they'll be responsible for all expenses.
Thank you. Any other questions by the council?
And after the, sorry, sorry, Mayor, after two year then Kelly, then they'll enter into a new lease.
But if we don't have other uses for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Resolutions approved all eyes with gross absent. Item seventeen, or excuse me, item B is, uh, um, entertain approval of a one-year license agreement, for a coffee shop that will be replacing the High Ground Cafe in the I R L.
Resolution approving that certain license agreement with Coffee Emporium L L C. Introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Resolutions approved all eyes with gross absent. Item seventeen is a resolution approving, uh, an agreement, um, with our state advocacy group of Coke, Murphy and Company, L L P. It's a renewal that covers the period from January one twenty-one to through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. The agreement is at the same, uh, price that it's been in the past. Done?
Resolution approving a services agreement with Coke, Murphy and Company, L L P for government relations. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. Discussion? We've had Tom Cope come and speak to us, uh, so we all familiar with who he is and his services. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd's.
I.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Resolution passes all eyes with gross absent. I'd entertain a motion now to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A through T inclusive, please.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Ooh, uh, give that one to Foster. Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
I.
Foster.
I.
Quinn.
I.
Dodd.
I.
Rose, uh, the consent calendar is approved all eyes with gross absent. Item nineteen is a city administrator's report.
Yes, Mayor, um, just to remind folks that we have lots of opportunities for them to, um, clean up and, um, dispose of items from their homes. This weekend, May first, is the citywide garage sales on Saturday morning. And you can stop at the rec center and get a map of where all those locations are and they'll also be providing, uh, free, uh, beverages and donuts, um, to go along with that. Then the following week, if you haven't sold it, um, and just, uh, if you have usable items, you can come to City Hall and the morning of May eighth will be the recycle swap meet. Um, and then also the, uh, Community Shred Day. So remind Jill that Community Shred Day is, uh, coming up on May eighth. Um, we also, on May fifth, will be having a Corleville Pride Cleanup Day, um, where we will be cleaning up around the community and then also planting trees and that will be held starting at eight thirty, um, in S T Morrison Park. And then there'll be a lunch provided, um, after that. And then following that, um, we will be having the mayor's cleanup week and that is May, whoops, I lost my calendar here. I believe.
Through the fourteenth.
Yeah, the tenth through the fourteenth, so that following week. So, and then there'll be also extra, um, uh, cart pickup, um, provided that previous week as well, um, depending on when your day is, is. So just a lot, lot of opportunities to clean up or get rid of those usable items that somebody else in the community might, uh, make use of. That's it, Mayor.
That it, okay. Mayor's report? Uh, I don't really have much more to add to that. Um, I just, it's really encouraging with this nice, nice weather, warm weather that people are certainly getting out and about. And the C D C released some encouraging information today as far as people who are fully vaccinated, uh, being able to not wear masks when they're outside, except if when they're with large groups, like a concert or something like that. So definitely trending in the right direction and I think that's just, uh, will help raise the spirits of, of everyone as we head into summer. City attorney's report.
I have nothing additional, Kevin.
I have nothing.
Okay. Committee and council members report. Um, I'll go backwards through my screening tonight. That would mean that, um, hi, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have much tonight. Um, I would like to, uh, remind everybody in the community who had gotten the, their first COVID vaccine, uh, you know, via the, um, the partnership of the Corleville Community Food Pantry and Co- and the Corleville Public Library, is their second shot is coming up on Thursday and Friday, um, of this week. And so the twenty-ninth and, uh, thirtieth of April is from noon to seven P M. And it's right at the Corleville Public Library, uh, on the, um, on their underground area. Um, and there are plenty of room for volunteers. So if any community member or, um, council or, or mayor or city staff would like to come and, uh, volunteer a few hour with us, welcome. I was also like to encourage, um, everyone to encourage friend, family and neighbor to get vaccinated. Anyone over the age of sixteen is now eligible, uh, to get the, the vaccine and most pharmacy have appointment available. And if, uh, you need help, just give, uh, Justin County, uh, Public Health a call or even the Food Pantry or the Corleville, um, Library, they'll be able to, um, help you, uh, find appointment. And I have a quick question for either, um, Kelly or the mayor. Is that the Corleville Pride Cleanup Day on May fifth? Is it just concentrated at the S T Morrison Park, correct? Will there be any other e- efforts to clean up other areas, um, in the city?
Uh, no, we'll be just starting at the park and we'll be going to other parts of the city. So there'll be several different locations.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Hi. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of quick things. Um, one, uh, quick point of, um, just clarification for, for, um, council member Quinn. The, so with the vaccine clinic, when you come back for your second shot, you, you will come back at the same time that your first appointment was, correct? Unless you made arrangements for another time.
Correct. Uh, we encourage everybody to stay with their appointment the first time, so that way it's, uh, cause less confusion.
Right.
And then it will cause less congestion.
Yeah, I've got, I've got two, two kids that, uh, that need reminded to come back at their, at their scheduled time. But, uh, that, that's just, uh, another great example of how seamlessly that, that clinic has, had been organized and, and brought together. So we made it really fantastic and convenient for everyone. Um, I did just want to ask about the basket auction. Um, I see the baskets in the, the picture, uh, or through the, you know, the, the little square. Can you, can either Kelly or, or, um, the mayor talk a little bit about how the basket auction's going to work this year?
Uh, yes, the basket auction, um, is done by our, uh, Fourth Fest Committee and they've had lots of donations, as you can see behind me. And this will be a virtual auction this year, uh, because of COVID. And, um, it'll, will start on May eighth and, um, the final bids will be taken on May eleventh. And you can go on the Corleville, uh, uh, city of Corleville website and find the link to the Fourth Fest Auction and it'll tell you all about the items, pictures and all of the details will be there.
Awesome, thank you so much.
I'll just jump in and I'll just embellish what Kelly just said and that's, uh, I'd encourage people to check that website, uh, almost every day because as new baskets are coming in every day, they're taking photos and, and adding those. So every day, there's a few new things that you might consider bidding on.
Awesome. Um, since Mitch is not here, I'll, I wanted to just, um, finally highlight a couple of library things that are happening. Um, Saturday is the Friends of the Library, um, book sale. That'll take place outdoors on the library lawn. That starts at ten A M. And it is a pay what you want or pay what you can, um, type of, of structure there. So that is this Saturday at ten A M. And then I have to talk about something that I am extremely excited about and that is the, um, L I T program. Uh, L I T is an acronym for Listen, Initiate and Talk. That is on, uh, this Thursday, the, the twenty-ninth, starts at six thirty and I, I'm, I'm really excited about it because my favorite author, Roxanne Gay, is being featured, um, for that, that programming. I actually have her book behind me because it's, it's one of my, um, Bad Feminist is one of my all-time favorite books. So, so lucky to, to have her as a part of that programming. Uh, highly encourage people. Highly encourage people to check her out, check out that wonderful program. The Zoom link is on the Corleville Library's Facebook page. So if you just kind of scroll through the content on the page, you'll find the event with the link. And that is all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Megan. Lori, you're up next.
I'm up next. Good. A shout out to our wonderful city clerk, Thor Johnson, and deputy clerk Kelly Lindsay because May second through May eighth is Municipal Clerks Week. So we want to show our appreciation and thank you, Thor, all your contributions in keeping records and keeping us all together at the city. There's many licensing and many things that the city clerk does, and we really appreciate you. Also, I look forward to being involved in all the activities that are coming up, that cleanup and the book sale or book donations and even the vaccination time. Just so glad that we can get out and be involved and look forward to seeing a lot of you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. And Jill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had two things. The first one, we kind of had a few email exchanges. Some of our urban chicken population constituents are getting their chickens. And they have the twenty-five dollar fee, which we had agreed to, but there's also a banding fee. So I didn't know if we could address maybe Kevin or Kelly, how much this, this banding fee is? And if that's going to continue or if that can be taken out of the twenty-five dollars or how that's going to work.
Sorry about that. I was talking to nobody. So what we had set up and when we passed the ordinance, we didn't know what these bands were going to cost. So what these bands are, I'll just explain what they are. So what the police, Holly had ordered these bands, they have a number on them so that when the chickens are licensed or permitted, the owner gets the gets these bands, they stick them on the chicken. I think they just go across their leg. And then, so this would be, what we had set up is a one-time fee to do that. It would be five dollars for the, and then they don't have that extra fee after, after that. So that's, that's what we had set up. We didn't know what the fee was as when we passed the ordinance because we hadn't ordered them yet because we want to make sure the ordinance was passed before that was done. So I, I guess from my standpoint, that's what, that's how we set it up. If there's people want to do something differently, that's.
Maybe we can just kind of address that in work session a little bit. I won't take the time of it now.
Okay.
And then I just wondered if you might want to give the community an update on the reforestation plans from the Bridgewater situation? Where we're at on anything there.
Sure. You want to go, Kelly?
Yeah. I've got, I was have my report back on there waiting for the work session. Let me just pull it up.
Sorry, Kelly, I figured the community might be interested on our regular meeting.
Yeah, so Alex, our Parks Director has met with M M S and M M S is the engineer for the consulting firm that is doing the subdivision. They have actually landscape architects on staff and they are doing a report on the pre-construction, summary of the pre-construction wooded areas. So that they'll show what the forest was like before the damage was done. Then they're going to do a post-construction limits of disturbance, so what the contractor can do, which will be approved as part of a map. They're also looking at the square footage of city property where there would be replanting done. They're also going to have a plan for ground cover species that would be installed in the forest as well. And there'll be a special note of areas of screening on the city property behind the duplexes next to, before you get to the ravine. So that will be additions that they do as well. And then there will be also a plan for understory and overstory species for both the north and the south areas. And that will be based on the Parks Superintendent's recommendations of species to use in that area. Additional things that will be part of that plan is there will be an inventory of the removals that were done. And then we'll be looking at reclaiming the wood and using for structures that, the trees that were knocked down. And then finally, they, there will be a timber stand improvement plan put together, which will include invasive species removal and standing dead safety hazards. So they're just from duration and time, there's been trees that have been damaged and those will be removed as part of this process as well. So the consultant is doing an excellent job of pulling all this together. We also had the D N R Forester came on site and visited with Alex as well and felt comfortable with the recommendations that were being made. So we look forward to having that plan completed. And then the city attorney will put that plan as part of the development agreement, which is a contract with the developer that outlines all of these things and that they agree that they will be doing those items.
And now they're on standby, correct? While we're working on things.
Yep, we do not, we do not have a C S R permit, nor do they have a side development agreement as well.
I really appreciate all of your work on this and holding them accountable for this. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. It sounds like we've got a fantastic plan in the works. Really grateful for everybody's work on that. Ken, I just want to make sure, are the neighbors being notified? We're communicating with them so they know that this is in motion.
Yeah, we will. When we get the plan, our intent was to let them know that that plan had been developed before we.
Okay. Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. The city, and the city is paying for all of this work then, Kelly?
No, the developer would be doing that work and it's their engineer that they're paying that is developing the plan.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jill? Okay, thank you very much.
I muted. That was it.
Okay. Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from the formal, formal meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. Let's take about a two-minute break and we'll.